I'd like to call the Planning and Transportation Commission regular meeting of August 18th, 2025 to order. This evening, there are no teleconference requests. Item three on the agenda, let's say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask for the roll call, please?
Chair Clements.
Present.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Anand.
Present.
Commissioner Tapia.
Present.
Commissioner Kaniasty.
Present.
We'll go into item five, approval of the minutes from the August 4th, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission meeting. Do any commissioners have any desired edits or changes?
No.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of August 4th Planning and Transportation Commission meeting minutes.
Right, thank you. Can I have a second?
My second.
Chair Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaniasty.
Yes.
Commissioner Tapia.
Yes.
Thank you. We're on to item six on the agenda. Before we start, I wanted to note two items. Number one, the public hearing listed in item 8A on tonight's agenda for 789 Old County Road is going to be deferred to another meeting. Is that a date to be determined?
Yes, it's Tuesday, September 2nd, but we have a slide for that in the presentation.
And we'll go towards that. But before we open public comment, I also wanted to note that the public comment period for 1287 Industrial Road remains open from a previous meeting. So if anyone would like to make a public comment on anything they choose that's not on the agenda, and you could include either one of those projects I just mentioned because they're not being heard tonight, I think, then please feel free to do so. So we'll start with anybody physically present in chambers. I think I see mostly staff here present in chambers. And Lynette, is there anyone on Zoom who has a raised hand that would like to make a public comment?
There are none.
And we could go to the public comment, yeah, directions. I'll give it just another minute. On Zoom, if you'd like to make a public comment and you're on the Zoom meeting, the number of the meeting is 886-3546-7439. After you dial the phone number or go on Zoom, the phone number 669-900-9128. You can virtually raise your hand by clicking on reactions if you're online and then raise hand. If you're on phone, you can press star nine, and then when you get called on, press star six to unmute yourself. Lynette, are there any hands raised for Zoom?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Then I need a motion to close the public comment.
I move to close the public comment.
Thank you, and I will second that. Can we roll call?
Chair Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaniasty. Commissioner Tapia.
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven on the agenda tonight is the appointment of officers for the fiscal '25-'26 year. So whomever's appointed would serve from now through the end of next June, assuming we do not meet in July. And we're going to be voting on appointment of chair and appointment of vice chair. And so let's start with 7A, appointment of chair, and I will take any nominations.
Chair Clements, if you would be willing to continue in this role, I would like to nominate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy, yes, I would be willing to continue.
I make a motion to nominate Chair Clements as chair of the PTC.
Oh, thank you. I guess that needs a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Why don't we take other nominations and then have discussion on the entire item? Are there any other nominations? No? Okay. For discussion on the item, I'd be happy to serve again. I'm enjoying working with staff, and thank you for the nomination. Any other comments? Okay, I guess we need a vote.
Chair Clements.
Yes, thanks.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaniasty. Commissioner Tapia.
Yes.
Thank you very much to all, and I look forward to serving the public for the upcoming term. Appreciate your support. Okay, item 7B, appointment of the Planning and Transportation Commission Vice Chair. Are there any nominations? I would like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Bundy for the role of Vice Chair if she is willing. Commissioner Bundy has actually served on other public bodies and other boards, and I think brings a wealth of experience to the role that complements others. Areas of experience, I think, should be a terrific vice chair. Do you accept?
I will accept. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need a second, then.
I second that.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, thank you. I guess we have a roll call.
Chair Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaniasty. Commissioner Tapia.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, you too.
Congratulations, Chair Clements and Vice Chair Bundy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That brings us to item eight, public hearing tonight. We have two items on the agenda, and I'll talk about a public hearing for a minute, then we'll go to the individual items. The procedure for a public hearing is that staff presents a report on the history, the physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. If applicable, the applicant may then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its own recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers who are physically present should fill out a speaker's form found by the door, hand it to the recording secretary. And prior to addressing the commission, the speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting's being recorded, which will assist staff in preparing minutes. And of course, we're taking public comment online as well, on Zoom. So going on to item 8A, as I noted earlier, 789 Old County Road. Should I read the entire matter title? Okay. Item 8A is 789 Old County Road, APNs 046131610 and 046131630. This is a public hearing to consider recommending that the city council certify the mitigated negative declaration and adopt the planned development zoning, the planned development permit, and the development agreement. And consider approving the tentative parcel map, the transportation demand management plan, the grading and dirt haul certificate for the development of two new life science research and development buildings with a parking structure. This has been requested. So we are opening the public hearing tonight. We are able to receive any comments, and we will not hear the full item tonight. The item will be continued to September 2nd, 2025. So at this time, I guess, again, we could ask if anyone would like to speak on this item. It's technically on the agenda tonight. You are technically allowed to, but no staff presentation will occur. I see nobody in chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom, Lynette, with their hand raised?
There are none.
Okay. I'll just wait another minute in case anyone on Zoom changes their mind. If you'd like to make a comment on 789 Old County Road, you can join the Zoom meeting. The meeting number is 886-3546-7439 if you are online, or you can call 669-900-9128 to virtually raise your hand. You can click on reactions online and then click on raised hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine, and then star six to unmute if you're calling. Lynette, is there anyone who has changed their mind and would like to make a comment on 789 Old County Road?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. So there's no motion to close the public comment. It remains open until September 2nd.
Through the chair, we'll need a vote to continue the item to September 2nd.
Oh, okay, because it was on the agenda, but it was not. Thank you. If anyone would like to make this motion.
I move that the public hearing for item 8A for 789 Old County Road remain open, and that the item be continued to September 2nd, 2025.
Right, thank you, and I would like to second that.
Chair Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaniasty.
Yes.
Commissioner Tapia.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item 8B is our item to be publicly heard tonight. It's on 268 Industrial Road. It's the consideration of a design review to establish a new sign program for the Honda dealership, including wall signs and a monument sign at 268 Industrial Road, APN 046052330. Do we have a staff presentation? Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, commissioners and members of the public. My name's Emma Goldsmith. I'm an associate contract planner with the City of San Carlos, and I will be presenting on this item. The item before you tonight is a sign program for the Honda dealership at 268 Industrial Road. I'd like to take the opportunity and introduce the applicant team. Kent Putnam with Honda San Carlos is the project applicant. Andrea Kamenski is the representative of the property owner and is also affiliated with Honda San Carlos. And tonight, we have Adam Sandow with the permitting team, and he is with McDevitt Construction. Separately, Alan Cross is the architect for the project. So the request before you tonight is the consideration of a design review to establish a new sign program for the Honda dealership, and this includes wall signs and a monument sign for 268 Industrial Road. As some background, tonight, I'll talk about the project site. I'll get into the background of the project, and I'll dive into the details of the project. The applicant will also have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the project, and there'll be an opportunity for questions and public comments before the commission makes the formal action. For some context, 268 Industrial is located right off of Industrial Road and also has shares of frontage with Purgato Road. Associated land uses that surround the site consist of light industrial and commercial uses. Right across the street is PG&E, and there's an electronics manufacturer, a tree company, and some multi-tenant businesses that consist of other light industrial and commercial uses. More specifically, 268 Industrial Road is currently the site of Honda San Carlos. This includes the sale of new and used cars, associated service, and storage for their fleet. Currently, the main building is undergoing a reface and an upgrade, and the only current sign on site is a 13-foot monument sign. Given the size of the project site, the existing work that's occurring, and the applicant's request to exceed the amount of signage that can be approved at the staff level, they are currently requesting a new sign program. The purpose of the sign program is to ensure a cohesive vision for the site, make sure that the signs are well-balanced, and they adhere to a similar typography and color and other design standards. The findings for a sign program are found under San Carlos Municipal Code 18.2205D. Any proposed signage would have to adhere to the site's underlying development regulations. The site is zoned as light industrial and is located in the Northeast Area Overlay District. The site is quite large at 88,000 square feet, and the existing tenant space, which is the main determinant for how much signage can be permitted, is about 23,000 square feet. In terms of environmental analysis, this project would be exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15301, which allows existing commercial tenants to pursue signage. A little bit of background on the project, Honda San Carlos has been in operation in the city since 2018. They were previously located at 777 Industrial Road. This was a site with a unique layout. It had a 115-foot-long driveway and very limited frontage along Industrial Road. At that time and at that site, they were granted a variance to increase the amount of signage they could have. In 2021, they relocated to 268 Industrial Road, and they went before the commission to seek a design review for that facade update I spoke about earlier. Separately, at the staff level, they were approved to relocate their existing monument sign to their new location. In 2025, Honda submitted a sign permit, which was reviewed at the staff level and determined that it required a same program. On the screen before you is the site plan prepared by the applicant. There are four signs proposed at this time, three of which would be wall signs, and the fourth sign would be the monument sign that is currently existing on site. All would face Industrial Road. So the applicant is requesting approximately 198 square feet of signage. Sign area is primarily determined based on the business frontage, and using the calculations in our code, they could be permitted up to 289 square feet. However, there's a cap for all tenants that they cannot exceed 150 square feet, which is causing the request for a sign program at this time. Table one outlines the number of signs, their dimensions, the area, and their location. On the slide before you is the existing site against what is currently proposed. I mentioned that there are three wall signs. I do want to note that the existing monument sign is considered legal nonconforming. It exceeds the permitted height that is allowed under our code at 13 feet. Currently, monument signs can stand at eight feet tall. Provided that there is no change, this is permitted to continue. However, there has been a condition of approval added that, should there be any proposal to change a sign, it has to comply with our current code. In terms of public outreach, public notice was mailed on Wednesday, August 6th, to all property owners within a 300-foot radius, and public notice was published in the San Mateo Daily Journal on the following day, Thursday, August 7th. At the time of this presentation, no comments have been received. On the slide before you is the motion, should the commission choose to move forward with this application. Thank you. That concludes my presentation at this time. The applicant does have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the project. There's time for commissioner questions and public comments before the end of, before the motion is made. It is at your discretion the order in which this occurs, but I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Emma. Appreciate your presentation. Would the applicant like to present? And then maybe we can proceed with comments from the public and questions. I think, your name is Kent, right?
No, my name's Adam Sandell. I'm the representative of Honda for today.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add. I think the presentation was great, and just want to thank Lisa and Emma for all the help they've done on this so far. So if I'm here, if there's any questions, though. Thank you.
Good, thank you so much. Yeah, we find staff quite helpful, too. Glad that was your experience. Thank you, Adam. Well, let's start with commissioner questions, and we'll go to questions from the public and comments, and then back to commissioner comments, and then a vote. So I'd like to start to my right with any questions. Commissioner Anand.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. I have a few questions. The first one would be this signage exemption with the scale and the illumination of the sign. Like, does it, I understand that it fulfills the branding needs for the business, but does it do anything else, like for the city in terms of like tax implications, or are Eastside Development Plan anything to that effect?
Yeah, the scope of this project is primarily focused on the signage. A lot of the considerations for parking and landscaping in the Northeast area were really discussed in the design review that occurred at the October 2021 meeting.
And any light pollution implications of a bigger LED signage? Has any study to that effect been conducted?
It has not, but these would be internally illuminated LEDs, and I will allow the applicant to speak on behalf of the potential light impacts as well.
And any changes, because I understand that's like a parking lot, and like there are cars parked, there'll be pedestrians, I assume. So has any study been conducted on effects on pedestrian safety or vehicular congestion?
Yes, so the monument sign is existing, and when it was reviewed at the time, there was Yes, so the monument sign is existing, and when it was reviewed at the time, it was ensured that it wouldn't impact, like, vehicle sightlines. That is currently existing and has been installed. For the wall signs, what staff was primarily looking at was ensuring that it meant clearances for pedestrians walking underneath it, so it met minimum heights so pedestrians could safely walk underneath them.
And I'm curious, because like, this sign exemption was granted in the past site, which was in a flag lot, but it seems like it's been grandfathered into this lot, which is a different kind of a location. So what was the thought process behind it?
Yes, so the variance for that site was sought and approved because of the unusual layout, and the standards for a variance are a lot more strict and more toward the actual layout of the lot. In this case, sign programs can be granted for larger projects or multi-tenant projects, and they're really focused on creating a cohesive vision. Under our code, the maximum 150-square-foot cap on the area only applies to stuff that is processed at the staff level. Sign programs don't have to adhere to that cap. But in our code, we do have calculations that we determine based on the tenant's frontage, and it does comply, it falls underneath that calculation. So it exceeds the cap, but it falls underneath our calculations.
And that, let's assume another dealership comes next to it, which has an even bigger frontage, then can they get to a bigger sign? Does that mean that?
Sign programs are generally granted for larger projects, and that is kind of determined at the discretion of the director. And I think in this instance, there's a facade upgrade, and the site itself is quite large.
Yeah, that will be all. Thank you so much.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Tapiaus?
I had similar questions around the grandfathering of the programs or the grandfathering of the exemption, so thank you for answering that question. And just a small question, the sign was just picked up and moved, basically, right? It's the same exact sign as prior, noting that it was a little bit, the configuration of the lot was different, so I can understand why the sign maybe was needed to be bigger, given where we are. And I think you've addressed the rest of my questions. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. To my left, Vice Chair Bundy. My questions have been asked, thanks. And Commissioner Caniasty?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand where we are on, as far as the ordinance goes, I think what you said is it technically doesn't meet the signage, but it exceeds the cap, but it meets, otherwise meets the ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct. So the ordinance, the cap, is really associated with what we can process at the staff level. I think in this instance, it does fall beneath the calculations. The cap is really set for what we can process at the staff level. It is really at your discretion if this signage is appropriate for the site itself.
Hi, Lisa Costas Sanders, Principal Planner. It's definitely aesthetic, so I think the concern is kind of the size of the sign in relation to the size of the building. And so sign programs are typically processed on our larger developments, because you have a larger building, it just makes sense to have the larger signs.
Okay.
Well, I think staff's recommending approval, it meets all the findings, it seems appropriate for the size of the building. Auto dealerships are a part of the city's economic development plan. There is a substantial amount of sales tax that's typically generated, so those are uses that we do like to support.
Okay, thanks.
And my questions have been answered, thank you. I wanted to go to members of the public, I think it's to staff in the chambers. For those of you who may be on Zoom, if you'd like to make a public comment on item 8B, it's on 268 Industrial Road. The Zoom meeting, if you're not watching on Zoom already, it's 886-354-7439. And you can either go online, or you can call on the phone, 669-900-9128. If you're online, you can virtually raise your hand, you click on reactions, and then raise hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and if you get called on, you press star six to unmute. Lynette, do we have any hands raised for this comment on 8B?
There are none.
No. Okay. Just pause for another minute in case someone changes their mind and would like to make a comment. And after public comments, we'll go back to commissioner comments and vote. Lynette, has anyone raised their hand to make a public comment?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Then I need a motion to close public comment.
I move to close public comment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Chair Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Caniasty?
Yes.
Commissioner Tapiaus?
Yes.
Thank you. So time for commissioner discussion. There are some good questions and clarifications that were made. Would anyone like to start with comments discussion? Vice Chair?
Sure. I appreciate the staff report and the applicant's work toward this. I thought that the memo, the staff report demonstrated general plan consistency, the signage is appropriate for a light industrial use. I actually think the navigational improvements, as somebody who goes to car dealerships to get my car worked on sometimes, is very helpful, and I appreciate retaining the existing nonconforming sign. There's no reason to throw stuff away that still has remaining useful life, so I appreciate that, and I'm supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Caniasty?
I don't really have anything more to add than that.
Thank you. Commissioner Anand?
I appreciate the detailed presentation, although it might seem that this is a small change, but small changes can make big impacts, and we appreciate all the dealerships here and bringing in the good money into San Carlos to benefit the community. So overall, I support the project, and I appreciate the work done into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tapiaus?
I also want to add my thanks to the team that put all this together and educated us on the details. As a new member of the commission, I especially appreciate the education. I think echoing what colleagues have said here, the location seems mostly industrial, and light issues will be at a minimum, especially in that area of town, and I appreciate all the work here, so I'm supportive.
I'm also supportive. The findings were made easily. I also agree that the continuation of the nonconforming existing use makes sense, given it's the same exact sign, as long as the new placement does not cause any issues. And I thought the signs looked attractive and appropriately sized for the buildings as they were rendered. And so let me make the motion to support, thank you. I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission adopt the resolution approving the design review for a new sign program for the Honda dealership at 268 Industrial Road, APN 046-052-330, based on the findings, conditions of approval, and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Chair Clements?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Caniasty?
Yes.
Commissioner Tapiaus?
Yes.
Congratulations to Honda. Thank you for coming and asking permission on your signs. We appreciate that. I want to read the appeal language, that the Planning and Transportation Commission's action will be final unless it is appealed to the city council within 10 days of the date of the action. The deadline to file an appeal is 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 28th, 2025. Thank you. We are on to item nine on the agenda, reports, correspondence, and general information. Item 9A, any reports on recent city council actions, Risha?
No, I do not have any updates.
Thank you. Any Planning and Transportation Commission comments or any reports? No, thanks. Correspondence.
The only thing is, the next Planning Commission meeting will be September 2nd, which is a Tuesday.
Yes, so next, so no additional letters other than we're in the packet, and yes, we're moving because of Labor Day, right?
That is correct.
So the meeting's not on Monday, the first, but on Tuesday, the second. Thank you. At which time, hopefully, we'll take back up tonight's item on Industrial Road. Thank you. And with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.[1740.11]